Let us pray together. Gracious God, we give thanks that you are a loving God, that you love all peoples. We thank you for the gift of government. We thank you for those who serve. We are mindful of our police officers, our firefighters, our first responders. We're mindful of our administrators. We're mindful of our teachers, our principals, those who served tirelessly day in and day out. And we're mindful this evening, especially, Lord, of our council members. We pray for our outgoing mayor and all those other council members who are completing their terms of service, and we just thank you for their service. And we give you thanks for our new mayor and new council members, and we ask you to bless them and guide them and strengthen them. And we ask you to bless this meeting tonight, Lord. We ask you to bless our council members, to give them wisdom. And we just thank you for our city. And we thank you for the blessings of our city. And we ask you to bless East Ridge. And we ask you to bless all the businesses that our community would thrive. And we thank you that you are for us. You're a God who is always for us. And we thank you for your love and your goodwill. And now, Lord, just bless this council meeting and these council members as they lead us to pray in Christ's name, amen. And let us join in the pledge of allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You said the thing.
May I motion?
May I motion? Please.
Thank you.
The question? Go call him in.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Do you have communications from citizens? I don't see if there's anybody in the audience who might come up and speak. Your turn.
Great Shipley, six twenty-one, six thirty. I just want to be people I didn't get to reach out to the other night. Kenny Custer for coming on board here, City Manager. Esther not being here for her winning that district, uh, brand kind of new mayor in a couple of weeks. And congratulations, along with Pat Cassidy, Court Clerk, and re-elected Jackie Cagle, and new member Mike Chauncey on to the City Council. I'm glad for his service for his years, but he's my ears.
He'll be here for talk too.
And I'll say anything else next meeting if we come back to you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have other communication? Councilmembers?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank each and every candidate that showed interest in our city by running for office. Also, we'd like to thank the citizens that came out and voted for each and every candidate. And I'd also like to thank and congratulate Brian Williams and Mike Chauncey for the way we ran our elections, kept it clean, done everything we could do, and got our signs picked up. If anybody sees any more signs man on side of road, please call me, because I can't find them all. Thank you.
Brian? Yes, sir. First, I'd like to say, part of the agenda. Likewise, I'd like to congratulate Jackie for being re-elected and Mike Chauncey for being elected for council. And ultimately, to all the citizens, I'm honored and humbled to have your support. It was a long campaign, and I'm glad that it's over, but it's been good. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Wilson for his willingness to run and serve, and run a good career. Looking forward to working with the council and continue to be through the board. Thank you.
I just kind of mimic, I guess, what Goodson said. Appreciate everybody that did run. I think it was really a good campaign for everybody. It was good clean. It wasn't getting much slinging or anything. And I think it's more than that. I've seen it a long time. And, but, yeah, this has been my last meeting. Sorry for twelve years. Just want to thank all the citizens and all the backers, you know, that's helped me over the years. Lived down here all my life, sixty-eight years, over and rate down here. So, all we wanted to see progress in East Ridge, and it's coming along. It's taken a long time. I know there's things that people don't like growth sometimes, and I can understand that too. I don't think they like Atlanta or anything like that either, but it's been a pleasure and honor to start the people of East Ridge.
So, you will be back up here for one more time?
One more time.
I was gonna say, why not today?
I might cry, I think.
You don't know what I'm saying.
Mr. City Mayor?
Yeah, just like to say, I'm extremely excited about this opportunity. There's so many things going on in the city right now that is beyond imagination for some. You know, I worked here as long as I've had, and I can remember when we were building one commercial building every five years, if we were lucky. And now, there's a lot of good things going, and I really see that the council, I believe, is going to go the direction to look after the twenty-one thousand people and everybody that's wanted to come and stay and visit here. And that's what's important. And the more that we get, the more we can actually get back to our community and back into the neighborhoods. And that's going to be a focus, and I think that's what we're going to be working on. Mayor-elect there, and I've already had a conversation, we're ninety-plus years into the city, and we need to start really focusing on the mission and vision and lay out some values so we can actually instill these values and make sure that we're all going in the right direction.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. All right, we have orders.
Orders number one zero eight-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at one five zero nine East Ridge Avenue, tax map number one six nine H dash D dash zero zero six, from R-one Residential District to C-two General Commercial District.
Vice Mayor, Council, I was contacted by the applicant, and he asked if this could be tabled until the next meeting.
It has to be tabled to thirty, so thirteen. Have a little bit of a...
I have no objection.
Make a motion. Yeah, make a motion to table until twelve thirty.
Second.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Orders number ten eight-six.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the ordinance number nine eight-six to approve a lift condition on lot with the property located at five oh three Frawley Road.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Orders ten eight-six.
Second. Go call them. Any questions? You might have a question. Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number twenty-eight, forty-five, I believe, Mr. James has asked if this tabled to table.
That's right. He asked that if we pushed past the first of the year. They're gonna do some redesign, look at some more fundraising efforts, and see if there's a way to incorporate more of a multi-use top facility that would benefit all. We'll all sit down and meet with him.
You will make a motion?
Cross the council meeting, take the word.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, perfect. We need, we need a micro motion to lift the plan. It's already tabled.
Just leave it up there, and it's gonna come up, or you go ahead and decide who wants to say it, however you all want to. It's gonna come up anyway, no action on the thirteenth unless we accept the table again.
You put a date, you can put it on your agenda.
Right. You can make a motion to put it in February.
I'll make a motion to table this and a paper where the...
First meeting.
First meeting, paper.
Second. I'm just looking at the calendar. Second, it's like four. Fourteen's like, right. Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Orders number ten eight-six.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the ordinance number nine eight-six to approve a lift condition on lot with the property located at five oh three Frawley Road.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Orders ten eight-six.
Second. Go call them. Any questions? You might have a question. Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number twenty-eight, forty-five, I believe, Mr. James has asked if this tabled to table.
That's right. He asked that if we push past the first of the year. They're gonna do some redesign, look at some more fundraising efforts, and see if there's a way to incorporate more of a multi-use top facility that would benefit all. We'll all sit down and meet with him.
You will make a motion?
Cross the council meeting, take the word.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, perfect. We need, we need a micro motion to lift the plan. It's already tabled.
Just leave it up there, and it's gonna come up, or you go ahead and decide who wants to say it, however you all want to. It's gonna come up anyway, no action on the thirteenth unless we accept the table again.
You put a date, you can put it on your agenda.
Right. You can make a motion to put it in February.
I'll make a motion to table this and a paper where the...
First meeting.
First meeting, paper.
Second. I'm just looking at the calendar. Second, it's like four. Fourteen's like, right. Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Orders number ten eight-six.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the ordinance number nine eight-six to approve a lift condition on lot with the property located at five oh three Frawley Road.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Orders ten eight-six.
Second. Go call them. Any questions? You might have a question. Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number twenty-eight, forty-five, I believe, Mr. James has asked if this tabled to table.
That's right. He asked that if we push past the first of the year. They're gonna do some redesign, look at some more fundraising efforts, and see if there's a way to incorporate more of a multi-use top facility that would benefit all. We'll all sit down and meet with him.
You will make a motion?
Cross the council meeting, take the word.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, perfect. We need, we need a micro motion to lift the plan. It's already tabled.
Just leave it up there, and it's gonna come up, or you go ahead and decide who wants to say it, however you all want to. It's gonna come up anyway, no action on the thirteenth unless we accept the table again.
You put a date, you can put it on your agenda.
Right. You can make a motion to put it in February.
I'll make a motion to table this and a paper where the...
First meeting.
First meeting, paper.
Second. I'm just looking at the calendar. Second, it's like four. Fourteen's like, right. Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Orders number ten eight-six.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the ordinance number nine eight-six to approve a lift condition on lot with the property located at six seven five zero Ringo Road, tax map number one seven zero I dash C dash zero zero seven, from A-one Agricultural District to C-one Tourism Commercial District to C-two General Commercial District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. Orders number ten eight-six.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the ordinance number nine eight-six to approve a lift condition on lot with the property located at six seven five zero Ringo Road, tax map number one seven zero I dash C dash zero zero seven, from A-one Agricultural District to C-one Tourism Commercial District to C-two General Commercial District.
That's right.
Vice Mayor, Council, this ten cabinet on behalf of property owners, community managers, charge petition to issue a point and commission to rezonate this property for the construction of the Southern Honda Power Sports.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you, President.
Oh, my God. Is there anybody here, anybody here that here for this property? None, I said none. Everybody against? See that? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, orders ten eight-six.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at six seven five zero Ringo Road, tax map number one seven zero I dash C dash zero zero seven, from A-one Agricultural District to C-one Tourism Commercial District to C-two General Commercial District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Go call them.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sill?
Yes.
Okay. We have a public hearing, uh, for orders number ten eighty-eight, rezoning property at seven thirty Frawley Road, R-one Residential District, and C-two General Commercial District, C-two General Commercial District.
Yes, again, Vice Mayor, Council, the petition was made by Atlas Land Development on the half of the property owner Fletcher Smith. Mr. Smith previously rezoned this property from R-one to C-two back in two thousand two, and it was approved by the Eastern City Council. The only portion he left out was a small portion which his house sits on, and that's the portion in consideration for the rezoning. The remaining part, portion of the property is already on C-two. This would be to make the entire portion of the lot conforming to a C-two zone.
Okay. Is there anybody here that's property owners that are want to save the fund?
My name is Roche Amin, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm honored and proud to be here today with this site project in hand. As discussed in the last public meeting, I mentioned that we have analyzed multiple sites in East Ridge for this project. When it comes to developments, we found it in our best interest to own the land versus leasing land. And when investing in multi-million dollar assets, all the while, remain cognizant of the time, of time being of the essence. We're blessed to have the full support of Marriott and official approval for our project. At one point in time, we considered bringing two Marriott hotel projects to East Ridge, but that was curtailed by some landowners. The good news is that there are no strings attached to that concern, and that we separated in a professional manner. As developers and citizens of this community, we look forward to being good steward of East Ridge and creating one hundred new permanent jobs. These two projects will be a combined twenty-seven million dollar investment and produce a ten million dollars of taxable gross revenue annually. We are confident that the indoor water park and hotel will spur even more economic activity, meaning restaurants and potentially more hotels. We are confident that East Ridge is the perfect home for these projects, and we believe that the city council has standing for enough today, and the public represented behind me would enjoy the fun, safe, and professional operations we are known for as businessmen in this area. For any days like today, we would still be open for business as the indoor water park. This is not our first, or less, project in Hamilton County, and we intend on continuing to grow in East Ridge, Tennessee. With your approval today, we intend to break ground in early summer of two thousand nineteen and complete both our projects before the end of two thousand twenty. We value our relationships with our neighbors, and already have stated, started conversations to alleviate their concerns, specifically with the Atlas family who's adjacent to us. To be clear, we are not associated with the previous attempt for a water park in East Ridge about ten years ago, and we will not disappoint the residents of East Ridge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody here that's more satisfied with this resilient problem?
Stand there.
If you come up, please, and say your name and address.
Jeff Ellis, four hundred pound of love and drive. Had some time to think about every plan that's been proposed and have more questions and concerns. This property is, will adjoining my property. And as we discussed last meeting, we did agree upon some things as far as lighting and height, and since I've had more time to think about it, more questions and more requests. My one request, and we briefly talked about it, is selectable power lines that come from Ringo Road. They go the length of my property, and it will be adjoining the proposed site, our underground. Right now, they are a hazard. The developer, they've looked at it, and they see that at one point, we've got a power line that's maybe about that high on the ground. I don't know why, it's never been addressed before, but it is a hazard. I would like to have that line buried. You know, it comes up to my property line, I guess it'd be on the north side, the east side, and then it goes underground. So, that's, you know, that's the length that it got for some reason, I don't know why, it was never buried. But it's, it's a hazard, and if you go have a parking lot that's within probably twenty or thirty feet from it, in East Bedrais. One of my other concerns, and we briefly discussed it, was there is a barrier that they're gonna have landscaping there. What I would request is to have lingual cypress trees the length of our property from the north, I mean, the south side, all the way to the east, I mean, the south, it's south to north and toward. This would protect my privacy, and it would also do us a little bit of a sound barrier and a light barrier as the trees grown to prevent it coming up into my property, because I don't want, as people come up into this parking area, if it's a night, light shining up in, you know, in my front. So, that is something I would like to have. And, I don't know if this is the agenda, how this is supposed to be done, but...
Well, this is just for the rezoning, and they'll be in another meeting in January.
Oh, so, I don't think...
We probably want to come back to all, you know, but this is just, just the rezoning property. Then they still gotta go through, you know, some hoops and stuff to, you know, that they've got, they've got to do before they can even build something.
Okay. Can I ask for questions and concerns then, before this is done? Is that, is this the agenda for that also, or not?
Yes, I, I think it would be safe for you to go ahead and express those, so we can get them on our record, so we can go back and, and make sure that we address each one of those concerns that you, that you were having.
Okay. The turn lane on forty-one Ringo Road, as you are heading north, and you're coming across, if you come out of Sanctuary, and as your rise is coming across that little peak, where the, right now, where there is an entrance to Fletcher's property and an exit, if people are coming to this, you know, the hotel, they're gonna have to be turning and going across traffic. There's a turn lane there, but the congestion of the way that turn lane is set right now, if you're coming north, you're gonna turn left on Scruggs. People are coming south on forty-one, and they're going to enter that turn lane and to turn into the hotel. That, that area needs to be really looked at as far as for traffic and the possibility of, you know, somebody will turn, you're coming left and going into Scruggs, and so I come this way, you know, you're gonna have traffic coming in. Plus, it's just a little bit of a rise there, so the possibility of maybe some lines, you know, blind access. It is, I've looked at it several times, I was a private every day, and that's just something that, you know, that traffic flow needs to be looked at very, very closely before, you know, it's agreed upon as that's the actual entrance or, you know, caution lights up in there to prevent, you know, accidents. And I think he had, perhaps, some thinking about it, estimated start time and things like that. When they start this property, I mean, this, this Fletcher, is the work gonna be seven days, twenty-four hours, you know, when will that go on as far as construction?
Yeah. We have a construction ordinance that allows you to work throughout the week, not on holidays, some weekends, but it, it varies.
Okay.
Now, we tell them that you can work continuously, run the clock, is through special, special permission, and that's usually emergency, trying to beat weather, you're trying to beat, you know, something that's coming in.
And I think the answer, the hotel and the water park will be, I mean, as far as the construction will be going at the same time, or is it, we'll build hotel first, then water park, or, you know, is...
I, I spoke to, spoke to the developers about that and linked, and they said it would not be advantageous for them to build them separately, because if they build a brand-new hotel, people are not gonna wanna come, unless of everything that they gotta deal with with other construction.
If the original construction plans are modified, what is that, I mean, can they do it without approvals? Is it, how does that work if something is changed?
So, there's criteria that has to be met for a site plan review. So, again, this is just to rezonate property, whether Atlas purchases it or anybody purchases it. This is just to get to that, that point. And normally, that's one of the first steps of your diligence process, to make sure that it's got corrects on. Once the zoning process happens, then you start working on your true site plans, you start working on your true elevations, you start working on how we're gonna get in and out of the property. Are the roads gonna be wide enough, are there gonna be enough parking spaces? So, it, it starts with the site plan, and then we go through the building plan review and so forth and so forth. So, yes, things can change and modify, but it has to be approved through our office beforehand, and some of that will actually go through state review with it being tied in, just to say how we...
If there are changes, is that something that landowners that are close, would they be involved in that, notified, or would it be just the City Council making that decision?
So, the, no, it depends. So, the, the changes are generally done from a construction permitting standpoint. So, like, what, the landscaping changes, they're set. If that increase is added into the zoning, there is no change to that. But as far as building features, design, we have architectural design standards, all, everything has to meet certain codes within to be able to do. Now, there can be some minor modifications, but if you're talking about switching the parking lot from the, from the location of the water park, from the water park at the top, parking lot down at the bottom, all that stuff would have to go back through an original site plan review. Generally, once that's submitted initially, you'll make a few modifications to make sure you got the proper ingress egress. But other than that, changing it all around, that would be rare. But if that was a concern, I'm sure they would be willing, or the city could reach out to the neighborhood, um, community, because we want to make sure that we're involved and make sure that you're aware of what's going on around you.
I don't know if you'll be able to answer some of these questions. The parking area, mainly a reason I'm concerned about this, because it's closest to my property, is that gonna be something that is open to the public, twenty-four hours, less than less a week, people can come in and out of that area? Is it...
So, I don't know what their overall, um, operational business model is or business plan, but I'm sure they would be happy to explain it. And also, have you seen the, the way the, the elevation's been done?
Well, I can talk about it.
The smartest one that happened, the elevation change.
Is it different than what it was in the first meeting? Just, just for in detail. Okay. Should this parking lot, um, the relationship with parking lights, the city government parking lot shut down, that'll be on life use. And the other, the social approval, the elevation of the houses, or something like that, is in place. Okay. And that's your conversation. Okay. If this is approved, everything with Marriott has been approved, I mean, it's a goal, there's funding, everything, all of this is good. Okay. I don't know if we want to, if I need to bring this up now, or if I want to.
the top, parking lot down at the bottom, all that stuff would have to go back through an original site plan review. Generally, once that's submitted initially, you'll make a few modifications to make sure you got the proper ingress egress. But other than that, changing it all around, that would be rare. But if that was a concern, I'm sure they would be willing or the city could reach out to the neighborhood community because we want to make sure that we're involved and make sure that you're aware of what's going on around you.
I don't know if you'll be able to answer some of these questions. The parking area, mainly some concerns are about those closest, as close as to my property. Is that going to be something that is open to public, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, people can come in and out of that area? Is it?
So I don't know what their overall operation business model is or business plan, but I'm sure they would be happy to explain it. And also, have you seen the, the way the new elevation is being done?
Well, I can talk about it.
The smartest one that happened, the elevation change.
Is it different than what it was in the first meeting? Just for in detail. Okay.
Should this parking lot, the relationship with parking lines, see if that parking lot checked out, that'll be on life extension. And the other one, the social approval, the elevation of the houses, whatever, so.
Okay. And that's your conversation. Okay. If this is approved, everything where you have, has been approved, I mean, it's a goal for funding, everything, all of this is good. Okay. I don't know if we want to, need to bring this up now or not, I don't want to. What is the target customer demographic for this? Is this a, well, below, is that who you're targeting as far as your customers coming into the water park or is it, I mean, a long stand for several days across town? Is it normally younger teenagers or do they, I mean, if you got, I mean, from what I've read, it looks like it normally it's younger kids that, it would be like a camp door place by turn sometimes, I guess.
Family where you, that's what I think about, of all of that children, if you want a place that's safe.
Okay. Okay. That's, water park, is it a, what, what kind of hours would it be operating at?
At thirty a.m. to nine a.m.
The problem about security and, I was supposed to my property, we talked about cameras. Are these cameras just there, will they, are they being monitored or are they just there to be recorded and then if something happens, you know, how, what's, what's planned, what's your plans on that?
Surveillance is twenty-four seven, we're recorded and keep that in that great room.
Sir, if you would make it, she can't, she not, I don't think, sir. I'll be my phone.
Okay. I was asking about the security cameras, are they monitored or is it just recording without any, anybody actually watching? And the water park as far as outside, what kind of noise do you get, you know, from this while it's going on? Is it something that you, is actual noise that you can hear outside or is it pretty much contained with very little, you know, outside noise pollution, if that's what I'm calling it?
Yes, Tom, you asked me a lot, I was unable to answer. But, yes, sir, we've, obviously, we have guests that will be able to be on the property, stay in the hotel. So it's our utmost importance to make sure everything's a quiet environment. So you've got people that drove late, you know, that come into Chattanooga on layover and going somewhere else, they may be sleeping thirty hours if your park section going on. That's, so the noise level is very important, so with no outdoor water park, it's all indoor contained. Everything will have insulation properly, building codes, new building codes for the city. So we want to be quiet. Obviously, we know that the racetrack is there. I can't promise you or any of the neighbors that, but having the hotel structure between Pine Bluff and the raceway, we're hoping this will help the, the situation with the noise from the, from the racetrack and the constant roaring.
Never heard anything was there.
Oh, that's great. So we should not hear anything being on our, obviously, activities.
If you're practicing or running, I just leave that. Let's see, one of, one of my, I mean, a big concern that I have is just because of any time that something like this comes in and you have, you know, you're going to have people coming just all over the place, you know, to start off and then it will, you know, I presume it'll probably, but you're, I mean, it's going to be a high, not that it's a high traffic, but you're going to have a lot of transit people coming in and out. And anytime you have that, you get undesirables. I mean, it, it just comes with it. And my, security is a, you know, huge thing that, you know, that I don't want people wondering now that parking lot and up into my property. And I don't want people driving in, that was one of my questions about the parking area and security cameras is if that's open all the time and even though they've got cameras, people come in, knock windows out of cars, grab purse, grab for this, grab for that and go. You have any, you know, do you have any other planned security measures to try to prevent people access to this area, this parking area, or really that they can just come in and out as, you know, as they please? Are there going to be any kind of security checks coming in, gates, you know, magnetic cars or anything like that to slow down the undesirables into your parking and your facility?
Great question. Yes, sir. Actually, what we'll have is the upper parking lot is designed specifically for the water park hours operation. So in a perfect world, no one will be there, but we also know that, well, hopefully there's not a lot of undesirables by putting them out on what we're putting in and, you know, prevent that. But with the hours, the park closing, there should be no parking up on the upper lot. It will be controlled. Obviously, I cannot ensure that, you know, a criminal will always find a way, but hopefully there'll be no issues. And hopefully, you know, Mr. Custer and members of East Ridge has ensured us that, you know, we're investing twenty-seven million dollars in a great, safe community that's going to be, you know, obviously, we can all be good stewards and watch over each other. So hopefully, the security of the parking, you mentioned the fins, we're, we're totally fine with putting the fins up as well along with the lingual Cypress and streets if you would like that, but we do not envision ever having a time where there are people ordering going on or a hangout place. We do not want that. We have guests, we, this is a very, very expensive investment. So we, we don't plan on just putting money in and leaving. We live in Chattanooga, we are the property managers of the hotel and the water park, so we don't just talk about it. We actually have a vested, vested interest in the property and making sure it's successful for hopefully a couple of generations or more down the road.
You know, and that's, I had somebody I parked a stick of fingers at a place that was wide open as that place is, and somebody pulled in, knocked on the window, blew it over, bang, gun, gun, you know, and that's, that's why, you know, that kind of thing, if there was some kind of limited access or something, you know, I just want to make sure that people know that if they come in there, it's for security and that feels safe and that might feel safe also.
Agreed.
You know, I'm not against this at all. This is a, it needs to be revamped and there's things that it needs, and I think this is something that probably is going to be a good thing, and I just want.
Will you have, you'll have other opportunities to go about this later?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
On this map right here, it shows there's three entrances to this basic property. I'm sure where this stated there are going to be three entrances and three exits. Is that one entrance, exit, he's counting down here on Frawley, on Frawley Road?
Talking about the, the old Ringo Road exit.
Well, it looks like the entrance going up to seven twenty-eight property.
Yes, so that's actually, that's actually a road, that's, that's the old Ringo Road.
Well, is, is that the one that is shared by seven twenty-eight, seven thirty, and all of, everything on top of the hill?
It is.
So it's still going to be a shared road?
It could. So once, once we get to that, that point and we're able to start laying out the site plan, and then we'll be able to determine based on the number of vehicles that is designed for the lot, how many entrances and exits are going to be required, size, everything. And with the way it is on Ringo Road, we'll also be reaching out to T D O and have them do a review, it's the same way with when you, when Walmart was built, everybody wants to know why there's not a red light right there because T D O said we're not putting a red light right there, you can't put a red light right there. So we'll at least get their input and see if they have anything. And also believe, I don't have any confirmation of this, but there's also going to be some more work on Ringo Road right there at the state line due to that.
Official?
That's the city that we.
Word, please.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I was, quarterback, because I know it's which says state line, partial sharing road, so they've got permission to use the shared road for their access penetration too.
So that'll be part of their, when they go through the purchasing process and if they have to do any replanning or deed sharing, Mark, you might want to speak to that a little more.
Bring my message, that's that, that's seven twenty-eight property road instead of seven thirty property road.
We will take a look at that as it gets about to think, once we get the full site plan, I think after this, they go through the due diligence period, they're going to actually identify where the actual entrances are going to be. And then with regards to those additional properties, they can put the language in the respective deeds with regard to those properties to address the issue.
All this, all this is, it's just resuming that property. There's a lot more they have to go through before this can be made available. They go to full council, they'll have another opportunity to speak. Okay, nobody else? We have ordinance number ten eighty-eight.
An order to the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee to amend the zoning regulations and zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to reason on the property located at seven three zero Frawley Road, tax map number one seven zero J dash P dash zero two five point zero one, from R one residential district and C two general commercial district to C two general commercial district.
I make a motion to approve ten eighty-eight with the understanding I have that contractors that jumped the post of the thing, they are pretty well in line with each other, so I don't see any problem. Go ahead and resumely this. Better go further.
I'll say.
I'll say.
You more, Scotty? Go call Danny.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sore.
Yes.
Okay, we've got ordinance number ten.
An order to the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee permitting Motorola Solutions, Inc. on behalf of the city of East Ridge to construct a communications tower with related equipment at four two one four Ringo Road in accordance with ordinance four eight one, Article seven, Section one one three, titled Uses permitted on Review.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Sore, this is the, the communications tower of Motorola Solutions, but the, that ordinance will be amended to reflect fifteen hundred one, Tom, for second. Go call you.
Motion to approve ten eighty-eight with the amendment.
Say it.
You more, Scotty? Go call.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sore.
Yes.
I'll pay resolution number twenty-eight seventy.
A resolution, the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the advancement of state salary supplement payments for eligible firefighters and police officers.
Question approved.
Say it.
Go call Danny.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sore.
Yes.
Here we go, resolution number twenty-eight seventy.
An initial resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the incurrence of indebtedness by the city of East Ridge, Tennessee of not to, of not to exceed two million three hundred thousand by the execution with public building authority of the city of Clarksville, Tennessee of a loan agreement to provide funding for a public works project to fund incidental and necessary expenses related thereto.
This be appropriate now that we have that, probably good. Nine thousand, ready, American citizens have the right to object to this indebtedness that we're fixing to put them into, I believe, and they have twenty days to get a petition that ten percent of the registered voters to, if we pass this thing, going to send indebtedness, that they have the right twenty days later with petition to come back and do it. For us to have to listen to again.
Right, under TCA nine dash twenty-one dash two oh six, it's a publication, a resolution and the notice when a municipality undertakes a general obligation bond and it's passed by majority vote of the council as a method of checks and balance, the legislature has provided in there that a resolution with regard to indebtedness on a general obligation bond must be advertised upon the adoption of the resolution. And from there, the twenty days to the date of publication, if ten percent of the registered voters sign a petition in opposition, then in that case, once it gets turned into the city recorder, then if there is the opposition, then there would be a held election with regard to the adoption of the resolution. That election would occur no later than seventy-five days and no more than ninety days after the election commission is notified indirectly to hold an election. It's not to be a general or primary election.
That said, I would, I would motion we approve the resolution twenty-eight seventy-one.
Say it.
Go call Danny.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sore.
Yes.
Here we go. H, resolution number twenty-eight seventy-two.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing a loan pursuant to a loan agreement between the city of East Ridge, Tennessee and the public building authority of the city of Clarksville, Tennessee and the principal amount not to exceed two million three hundred thousand dollars, authorizing the execution and delivery of such loan agreement and other documents relating to said loan, approving the issuance of a bond by said public building authority, providing for the application of the proceeds of said loan and the payment of such indebtedness, consenting to the assignment of the city's obligation under such loan agreement and certain other matters.
Second.
Question.
I had a gentleman statement, I've got the financial report here for Mr. Miller, where the money will be paid back through the hotel, hotel taxes and it's got a unsigned balance, we've got three hundred thirty thousand, six hundred, six dollars in, we go back to the highest payment in the next twenty years, it's going to be a hundred seventy thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, fifty cents, so we've got a sufficient unsigned balance there to make this payment square.
And that's where, and that's what's currently in use now, not counting the new construction of the hotel and possible new construction out there. What next?
Anybody else? Ryan?
Yes, sir. Go call.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sore.
Yes.
I have a resolution number twenty-eight seventy-three.
A resolution, the city council, the city, the city council of East Ridge, Tennessee approving a bid for street improvements consisting of the resurfacing of various
Vice Mayor Council, this, this bid came in over what we had budgeted, we're working with the engineering firm, we would like to set that, that resolution at not to exceed amount for tally construction. The engineers, I think, they even cover the streets, they, they want to still do all the streets, they just may change the actual scope of work, but this is to award them the bid, but we want it not to exceed the seven hundred and five thousand that was put in the budget.
Mr. Custer, is there, what? From the paperwork, there's three different phases of this, three different groups, it's a total of approximately eighteen streets, this will encompass?
Yes, it is, and that's what they're looking at. They, they want to be able to still, and the city, I believe, still wants to be able to address those. We got into a little bit more expense when we added some of the other streets, you know, Berry Road, some things that had come up that was brought to council's attention that wanted to be added. We feel like that by changing a, a few of the design features and characteristics that we're going to be able to, to get the price where we need to be, a way where if we can set that resolution at that seven hundred and five thousand not to exceed, it allows us to work within those parameters.
Are we still working on that grant?
Yes.
Was the interstate, state, state where it was?
Yes.
John Ross, seven oh seven, that made it, are they on this piece?
That was, that's the one, the man is working on currently, the tip.
Yeah.
You have a motion?
Motion to approve tally construction on the resolution twenty-eight seventy.
Second, do we need to amend it with your recommendation of not to exceed, or is that?
Yeah, I think.
I think that'd be appropriate, that way it fell out because we wanted resolutions for historical purposes, we want to memorialize that with a motion to make.
I'll look around then. I'll make a motion to not exceed seven hundred and five thousand on the tally construction.
I'll say that.
Go call Danny.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sore.
Yes.
J, resolution number twenty-eight seventy-four.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for acceptance of National Recreation Park Association, N R P A, instructor training grant for physical activity.
Yes, Vazquez, and council, this is a instructor training grant for, um, along with ease grant that is put on by the N R P A, National Recreation Park Association, um, it's a multi-component, low-impact, six-week walking program, to teach people how to safely and comfortably incorporate physical activity into their everyday lifestyle, the target audience are those individuals with arthritis and other chronic diseases interested in walking the program, and are able to stand for at least ten minutes, uh, there's no, no cost to the city, it's just a, a six hundred dollar grant that goes towards instructor training.
Motion to approve?
Second.
More discussion? Go call.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vazquez?
Yes.
That's all we have for tonight, there's, uh, future, I haven't been in one, so. That's it, that's it. That can be any of them?
Uh, Melchior, I'd like to thank my last, I didn't think of last.
And again, I appreciate the doing, being Vazquez, for, for, for playing six year value, it's gonna be amazing, I'm gonna be involved, like we sit out here, listening, watching these guys, any journey.